Patient for the site plan review, what they're required, so basically. The site plan, you return to the site planner view section. And what's in that section, so if we turn the page back to page sixty-three into fourteen oh three. That's where it says what to submit on the page. The application for. And then the special use.
Time sixty-four.
Company by a plan, this plan where applicable shall show the location of the buildings, the structures, the parking. And that all makes perfect sense, the zoning administrators will investigate to make sure the application is complete.
And meets their.
And then a no case shall period exceeding thirty days lapse. Between the filing and the complete. The time, I'm not sure about that. In no case shall a period exceeding thirty days.
It lasts between the filing.
Of a con- oh.
Of a complete special use permit application.
And the time.
And the time of the notice to the planning commission.
So when the application is complete.
You got thirty days, you have to do it within thirty days. So.
Which makes sense.
The data exhibits and information required in application seems to be a moot point because it's spelled out in the application process, isn't it?
Yeah, and then when you read it, it talks about dwelling.
That, so that doesn't really make. Sense, I don't even think we need that. I mean, unless data and exhibits are different, but it seems if it's required in the application process, then why would you spell it out again in a separate section?
Just thinking.
I don't, I mean, that makes sense to everybody?
Well, I guess.
Cause you have to have a site plan, which would show your distances from the lot line.
Yeah, our ordinance text does a way better job of explaining what we need than this stuff.
Maybe we should keep it.
Yeah, can we, can we set our current ordinance text in that section?
Yeah, so our current ordinance, special uses shall be subject to the following requirements, if we aren't using some bad special age uses. And I feel like what we have in our current ordinance, we have enough information to make a decision.
Mm-hmm.
And to have a complete application, so.
Gosh, what section is the current ordinance?
Page forty-four. Section four thirteen.
Okay.
Let's see, I haven't kept.
Special use for new requirements.
Yeah.
I don't think special use.
Yeah.
You want just like, you got it, okay.
It's kind of in the. Location of the buildings, the structures.
Then we're at, we'll show the.
And then. Fourteen oh five, then it kind of gets into.
Standards for.
That is, that has our language in it. Okay, that's a good one, shall we go with this?
This one has our language in it.
So in the draft.
Mm-hmm.
In sixty-four, fourteen oh five.
Right.
Special use requirements is the text, is our text, number one, the relationship to the adjacent.
Mm-hmm.
That's in our current ordinance, number two, character operations.
Mm-hmm. So we could just take this. Beginning section of this and put it in. Put it in here instead of what's on there, just fit it in under the right.
But yeah, keep what it says, and then it says. Yeah, well, they, so yeah, there's some from our ordinance and then some new.
Yeah, so, yeah, that's exactly.
And then the planning commission modifications during site plan review, the planning mission documents required that do not apply and their justification for approval by the township board.
What is that, that sentence doesn't make sense to me, what does it mean? I feel like it's missing some verbs or something.
So, a lot, so a lot of ordinances give the planning commission the authority to modify some of the provisions. So let's say it required.
The requirement.
Four parking spaces as an example, and they had three. So the planning commission could modify the requirement. To allow the three, but they would have to justify why they were.
So that sentence needs to be better during the site plan review.
Let's say fence height, let's say the fence height requirement was eight feet, as an example. And they would prefer to have a six feet fence height.
Mm-hmm.
So the planning commission could waive, or modify some of the requirements of the special land use provisions. Cause as we know, sometimes properties have specific.
Should that sentence read during the site plan review, the planning commission. Um, ca- can document requirements that do not apply or can alter requirements.
Yeah.
Um, instead of documents.
I actually have some other language from other townships that.
Or can amend or can.
Well, modify.
Modify, okay.
Modify would. Um. Kind of.
Modify requirements that do not apply. Um. Um, that do not apply.
So.
And, and document their justification for approval by the board.
To determine. That they don't apply, so in our site plan review section, we have fourteen things that are required to be on the site plan.
Mm-hmm.
So whatever particular use that they're coming with, if one of those things that need to be on the site plan doesn't apply to their use. Then that would be the thing that you'd be modifying.
Okay.
Um. Nothing's jumping out at me right now, but.
Do our current ordinances have that provision?
Um, I do not think so.
The publicists go through the applying for variance.
So you're not removing the standard, you're just modifying the standard. To meet the property or.
Just a one-time, but.
Correct.
Because it doesn't, because the, the physical property itself.
Or, or.
Doesn't fit, okay.
I think of a better.
Is it not all the variants, it's just a one-time view?
It, correct, so it's kind of like a variance, but the planning commit, but the planning commission has the authority to modify the provision without having a variance. And then in your fact of findings, you would then say why you're waiving this or modifying the provision. So, or maybe we could reduce the fencing, the fence height in the ordinance says six feet and they want eight feet. As an example, so you could allow eight feet without them getting a variance because you have the authority to modify the provision.
Okay.
As an example.
They could say, our thing is way, way out in the country and there's deer that eats everything and we need to have a taller fence and there's no neighbors that are gonna see it or care or whatever, so we could modify it to eight feet. Something like that. In that special case.
Yes. Let's find some better language, uh, better language. So it doesn't seem like you can just change whatever provision you want, I mean, there's still a.
A standard, right, right.
I mean, if they have to have twenty acres. And they only have ten, I don't think you could say, oh, sure, you can do it, cause you only have ten, you know, there's gotta be.
Right. Within reasons.
I'm curious why they added that in if it wasn't in the original ordinance.
And then the next one is neither, the zoning board of appeals should, should have no authority to review or grant variances from any of the following conditions. Which, um.
Or any decision of either the planning commissioner or the township board in relation to grants.
So this language is from. The zoning enabling act. So. If you are, if this, your special land use is denied, you cannot appeal the decision to the zoning board of appeals.
Okay.
But this goes even farther, that says. You can't apply for. A condition either. So let's say the setback requirement is fifty feet, but you only have four and you want forty feet. So that line also says that you can't apply for variance. But if the planning commission can modify it, then you wouldn't need a variance, so they kind of have to. So the language should definitely say you can't appeal the decision to the zoning board of appeals, that's already in the zoning enabling act.
That you can or cannot?
You cannot.
Okay.
But. That you can't. Um. Apply for a variance from the conditions. Is different, that's an extra step. Um.
So that means that they would be applying to the ZVA, um, for a variance from the conditions that the piece, these set.
Ordinance, so if the setback is fifty feet.
Mm-hmm.
And they only have forty. Then that standard means they cannot apply, so that means that you have to meet all of these standards. Without applying for variance. Well, it's like no wiggle room, but then the line before that says the planning commission can.
Has wiggle room.
So. This text would like the planning commission to be able to modify instead of going to the ZVA. That kind of means.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Why do you have a CVA if that's the case?
Correct.
Is there. Why would anybody go to the CVA or, or you can be allowed to go to the CVA?
Hmm. Well, if you had a regular site plan, so if it wasn't a special land use, so if you had a regular site plan and the setback was fifty feet in the zoning district.
Mm-hmm.
Then you could apply for variance in that instance. But not if it's a special.
Does that make sense?
Does not make sense.
Well, then I don't, so it would make more sense for us to take out that we can modify.
So you would wanna keep that the planning commission modify.
Okay.
So we definitely need some, some limits to what you can modify.
Okay, yeah.
So it's. It, it doesn't wanna, we don't wanna present it as open-ended, that you can just do whatever you want, so it will be a parameter in there, what. I don't know, whatever, whatever.
That's gonna be a lot of, a lot of parameters. Cause it can be setbacks and spur footers.
Well, there, yeah, so, I mean, right, this next page is the campground provision, so that's kind of what I keep looking at, so as an example. You know, there's a green belt, there's a fifty-foot setback. Um, you know. But we have these provisions because this is what.
What?
The standards that we want them to follow.
Yeah.
But we do know that there are times where. Can you, whatever use they want. Just the, they don't all fit for some odd reason, I don't know, I can't figure.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I do have ordinances that do not have the, give the authority to the planning commission to modify any of them.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so they would basically just go to the zoning board of appeals. So.
Is that, does that make it, keep it simpler and keep it more straightforward?
All right, well.
Easier for.
Then, it's then, it's not on you to think that you're, you know, modifying too much or not enough, or. You know, maybe you don't wanna be charged with. With that decision of, oh, well, Mr. Smith gets less, but you know.
But it seems like that's what the zoning board of appeals is for.
So. Yeah, sometimes. So we can kind of. Just flag this and kind of come back to it.
Or make a decision?
Oh.
I mean. Uh, to me, it seems like if we go through and try to come up with the best ordinances that serve the community the best, that if somebody needs. Bit different. That they should go, maybe that property isn't suited for their special use.
And a lot of the times it would be properties that already have structures on them, sometimes where that structure doesn't meet the setback that's in the ordinance. So that would be. A reason, potentially to maybe modify, but. Correct. Yes.
What do you think?
Yeah, you want them to follow the standards, and if they don't, then. You either have provisions where you can modify, or.
They go to the ZVA.
It seems like. The fairest practice would be to set your ordinances.
I think.
And then if somebody needs a variance, they go to the ZVA.
I think so.
Rather than have the planning commission just be able to kind of willy-nilly modify.
That doesn't seem right to me.
The modifying, it could maybe be a page long or two paragraphs or.
Yeah.
I mean, I could kind of show you samples of some of what the other ones say and.
It, it seems like then you're just graying, it, it's, it's like you're muddying the waters of what we're, uh, we're trying to make it clear, we're trying to make the processes easier. And that kind of thing, it seems like this whole modification thing just kind of throws it back into the mumbo jumbo. And I, I don't like it, I would say take it out.
Yeah, I'd say take it out.
But. And then I will keep in, the zoning board of appeals has the authority, or. They have no authority, no, so.
They do.
It'd be the second part. So. They don't review or grant variances for conditions. Or, so it'd be the decision.
That is, yeah, because we aren't putting conditions.
Appeals.
From any of the following.
Of the just, of the decision.
Of either the planning commission.
Yeah, remove that to make that. Sound right.
Yeah.
We'll leave that one in there. Which is already in the zoning enabling act, so.
Okay.
Um, so the first one is campgrounds, so I remember, so in the ag district. I think we. Apparently we do not have campgrounds in our zoning ordinance, and I know that kind of when I was coming out about us coming in, someone had a campground application.
Mm-hmm.
And I think at that time there was, I don't know if any text was ever presented to go onto the ordinance or any of that. But that's kind of why this has been here, because.
I think we decided that we really didn't want it.
Okay, and I thought so too.
That's what I thought, that we didn't want campgrounds.
Okay. So we'll, we're gonna be removing the fourteen. And that's what I thought.
Seasonal mobile home parks, recreational vehicles.
And that's what I thought. Hmm. Uh, fourteen oh seven, churches.
You can't remove that.
It's actually, I did not actually go through the.
Old one?
One of the complete. There are more added to this, so.
In our current, in the.
Wait.
So it looks.
You've got campgrounds in here.
Yeah, but that wasn't.
Ordinance. We did a.
Online.
Yeah.
Okay.
On our own.
I thought, well, maybe the discussion was that we didn't want them.
I know, they're in the zoning ordinance, but they are not in any of the districts.
Okay.
I think that's the, so campgrounds is actually in our current ordinance. Sorry. Okay, churches, um. Three feet. Type of structure.
It looks pretty similar.
Part, yeah.
The language does.
Same, but, you know, it's the same one.
Uh-huh. Is there anything in there that we?
This, this may be a dumb question, but what do you mean they're in our ordinances, but they're not in any of our districts?
So campgrounds is in our current zoning ordinance. But I don't think it's listed as a use.
Use in any of the districts.
The district.
It's not in the ag, is it?
So it's in our ordinance.
Why would it be in our ordinance then if you can't do it in any of our districts?
Exactly.
That's another reason why we need to amend the ordinance, correct. Don't confuse them.
It seems like when they did this new draft in twenty twenty-two, they would have deleted that out.
Well, it's. Well, they wanted to allow it. Remember, it's in the ag district and then the new draft, we said we didn't want them. Yeah, that was the, the dealio. Is that there is a special provision, but it's not listed anywhere. As an allowed use, or as a special use. So I'm going with fourteen oh seven.
Okay, so fourteen point seven is.
Are we striking fourteen six?
Yes.
Yes. If you don't want campgrounds in the ordinance. It's in there now, but yeah, we already, yeah.
How do you feel about that, Trum?
Yeah, I'd say good. It, it's hard to know, I mean, Dave, you've been around the longest, but it's hard to know, like. This has taken so long that.
Yeah.
You have, currently it's there, somebody did a draft in twenty twenty-two, left it there, wanted it. Now we're reviewing it, different board, doesn't want it, like.
Yeah.
Who, who gave the direction on this draft, I don't know, was it the PC or was this the board?
So when I was here, we went through the ordinance and we, we made a pretty good dent, so. Um, Christie took the, I think the current ordinance, basically, and she put it in this new.
In this format, yeah.
In this format, and then we started going through it. And then she then made the corrections, like, um, in our current ordinance, you know, where we have the accessory building chart?
Uh-huh.
So we took those all out and put them in a different part, and then. So the planning commission had went through. The.
That was before I got there, right?
Yes. Excuse me. The, with Christie and then she would then implement the changes that the planning commission wanted to make. And then I had left and then Beth came in, and then I'm not too sure what happened after that, but the meeting I was at, Beth was like. Oh, well, I can do that text, I can do that text, and so I'm not really, I don't remember exactly how far I got.
And then after you left and then Beth, and then Beth left, and then nothing happened, cause it was absolute chaos.
So this same draft should, you know, Beth and Christie were inputting.
Mm-hmm.
Things, I don't wanna speak for them, but I think they were putting stuff in here to fill the ordinance to then go.
Go through, yeah, that was, that was the.
Uh, Beth, I like this text from the, from this zoning ordinance that I work for, let's put that in there. So like garbage cans. Why do we want a regular garbage can?
Right, well, no.
As an example, so. So a lot of the text that was in here was her cut and pasting from another ordinance. To put in this one. But adding more stuff doesn't necessarily mean. I thought we were reformatting it. And then fixing the things that need to be fixed.
Mm-hmm.
The, I, this never really has dawned on me, but this is wild to me, because here's, here's why this is wild. The way this process is rolling out, because it spans.
Yeah.
Time. There is, there is a scenario where in January, this PC could, could have three different people on it.
Yep.
And what if.
Dart all over.
And what if the three people that come in want campgrounds all of a sudden?
Yep.
Well, so I'm just saying like.
Yeah.
I, I'm maybe.
I mean, none of the changes have been made, we, I have just made notes in this book. So.
That's what I'm trying to say, like, what triggered this version in twenty twenty-two to be done so comprehensively, rather than just. Hey, this is a section we need to change and do it like a text amendment, like we normally do.
It was Christie and Beth.
Christine Beth wanted to rewrite the whole thing.
Lot of the, so like the, like, um, article three, which is the general provisions, that's all brand new text, that's not in our ordinance now. And that's like standard language in other people's ordinances, so it's good language for us to have because we didn't have it, but. That's kind of how it started was, I don't know if. Christie knows what ordinances are supposed to look like, I mean, she's very smart and very good with computers and formatting stuff. But that's kind of how it started was, we're gonna reformat it and then. Somehow the South Haven Township ordinance ended up in here.
Well, Grange, there's a lot of LaGrange in ours too.
Grange and those counts.
Yeah, so, so yes, it was Beth and Christie putting this draft together. Initially, and then now, and now.
Initially, we were just gonna take the original. Zoning ordinance and just make it flow a little better and just kind of shuffle stuff around so it's.
Simply formatting issues.
Yeah, yeah, and we weren't really gonna change anything, other than make it easier to find stuff.
So in that case, then campgrounds would have stayed because they were already in it?
If they were in it, yeah.
So it's, so it's in the current ordinance as the special use provisions are in there, but. Kind of, so we wonder, the ordinance is inconsistent, so.
Right.
Can't you get sued if you have it in there and then you don't allow it in any districts, can?
Well, no, someone came to have a campground, so we would have needed to do a text amendment to add it.
Oh my gosh, what a waste.
Started, yes.
It's such a waste of time and money.
I, I now feel like, yes, we're spinning our wheels, so my biggest thing. Is. The formatting, obviously, because chapter four has like everything in it, so chapter four. Really needs to be separated into different sections, and then the other thing is the setbacks. There are too many setbacks for.
Haven't we taken care of that?
Well, yes and no, it's better, but yeah, like, if you're on a lake. There's three different setbacks that you could potentially, so that was my biggest thing, when kind of. Previewing it and going over it was to fix those things, and then it kind of morphed into.
The inconsistencies.
Correct.
You're seeing over on page twenty-nine, it said this setback, and page forty-seven, it said this setback, and page seventy-six said this setback.
Well, yeah, so if you read the ag district, it says refer to four point oh three, and then the setbacks are there. But if you're in the RO district, the RO district setbacks are in the RO district. But then there's provisions in the four oh three that refer to setbacks on the lake. But if you're in the RO district, you don't refer to those.
So we're just putting them all in one place?
Well, we're, well, not, well, kind of, but not really, it's, it's better, but not really. Yes.
So I don't wanna confuse things, but. What if we started all over again? With the original zoning ordinance and just fix what's needed and.
So. And then. Would be an option, because a lot of the stuff in here. Is really outdated, I mean, we haven't been through the zoning ordinance in a really long time, so part of, part of it was to also update things. That might need to be updated, like the special land use provisions, if they needed to be, that's, you know, we don't really get a lot of special land uses. So we could. Um. I don't know, make a list of the most important things, but yeah, this draft that you're reading is from Christie and Beth. And then the beginning of it is from the planning commission. Reviewing.
That, right.
They took the, the ordinance that we have now and we made notes, and. And Dixie's right, that was up on the computer and Christie would make it on the computer and she would input it into her.
Christie on the planning commission?
She was, yes. Yes, and then, I think they advanced it deeply forward. And then, yeah, so then.
So the last couple of years is just kind of big. F'ing waste of time.
Well, we certainly know what's in the zoning law, it's gonna be like this a thousand times and. We have a good idea.
Is not our current ordinance, there is new stuff that's added and. And there is a lot of it that the planning commission. Hadn't got to because there was a point where Beth and Christie just inputted it, so basically they created the draft. After a certain point of the planning commission input, and then the planning commission needed to review those inputs to see if they liked it. But I'm really surprised the ordinance wasn't just adopted.
That's what I was just gonna say, why did the board not adopt this version in twenty twenty-two?
Yeah. I, I don't, I don't know that there was a republicarian for it, but yeah, I mean.
Well, certainly.
We could check. Some of the records, does the, I'm guessing the clerk would have. I never really researched. See, well, Ken is here. When did he come in? Oh, he's been here for four years, so.
Twenty twenty.
So twenty twenty, so he was here. So twenty twenty. So he was here, so he would know if it was bad. So I don't know why. So if Christie gave the version in November of twenty twenty two. I don't know why. Correct. There wasn't at that point a public hearing. For it to be adopted as this.
Cause you're saying Christie wrote this based on. Planning commission work.
The beginning of it.
Prior.
Some of that in the beginning. So the zoning districts. Um and I have I have the records from when I was here. So, yeah, so the zoning districts. She we went through with the planning mission. And then. But they were also inputting stuff. Moving forward so that we would have the next section and then the planning commission would then review it. But then there was a point where they just put stuff in there. This is this is it.
And then the meantime, other zoning ordinances would just kind of materialize. To confuse it. So we've had like five or four or five.
Cause those current.
Yeah, remember every every month we got a new zoning ordinance, a new thing. And I was like, wait, 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 wait.
This is madness.
I know. It's such a waste of time and money.
I I'm not one hundred percent sure how to. Make it make it better, I.
Well. Um.
We have to start, yeah, so this ordinance, it says a thousand square feet for the mineral drilling sites. I don't remember ever discussing. Raising it to a thousand square feet. I almost started reading it again.
I'm only seeing fifteen hundreds anyway. At one time.
This one says a thousand.
That is, didn't we want to make it seven twenty?
Yeah, but this draft, so in November of twenty twenty two. They wanted it to be a thousand square feet in this draft.
When you say they. Is it Christie?
And Beth.
Okay. So is it possible?
So.
That they were they were basically writing these ordinances on their own.
Yes.
Yeah, they were.
Okay, isn't that improper procedure?
Yeah.
Well, not a bit specific.
No, because they were, that was their task.
From whom?
The planning. So kind of like me. Yeah, let's say we're gonna take the special use section. So basically, I would draft the section and then bring it.
Review it.
So. So there, you know, so you would still see my work, but I'm just doing it ahead of time for nothing.
So so to be clear, you're saying the planning commission. Commissioned Christie and Beth to draft this.
I wasn't hairy up when they did.
Okay, I this I think getting to the bottom of. How this originated is key here.
I think Christie took, she was on the planning commission. Well, actually, was the clerk. So she wasn't actually on the planning commission.
She was.
But I think when we started this, she wasn't.
But in twenty twenty two, here's the planning commission members Cheryl, Dave, Bav, Anita, Shelly.
And we started before that, so.
So. I remember when I first came on. I remember there was. Ordinances being redone and I we got a new. Section or something, everything. But Christie was always at the meetings and and.
The minutes.
Okay.
And she would, she would.
And she and she and Beth did were the generators. Eye compass, whatever.
She would type, she would take the minutes and she would put them into eye compass. And then she would also. In the beginning, put the comments right into the text. But then there was a point where they just. Moved forward and.
Writing the text because we were had to get it done.
Correct.
I do remember that.
The next sections and then it would then come to planning.
Well. It I think the reason why this is all relevant and maybe we should pause on this is, Dave, if you're saying. And you're probably right, if the trustees. Commissioned this new draft. I mean, I.
Well, we could do.
I mean, I guess it still sounds like there's questions if it if this was going about the right way, but we won't even go there yet.
Yeah.
Okay.
And. And I mean, we can hold the minutes and I I mean, I have the notes from when I was here. I gave them to Beth and she gave them back. So for when I was here. Um. Yes, I have all the notes that we were talking about, so I'll know kind of when we stopped. And then. I kind of came in and met with Christie and Beth to move on to the next sections, whatever those were, which I think they were like. The supplemental standards like pools and fences and.
I remember talking.
So that's kind of where I left was at the general, the supplemental standards.
Is it a ca- is it a case maybe where where they PC started in on this task of just reformatting, like shuffling things around like you said? And as we're reading through it, they're like, oh, where did this come from? Oh, this says. LaGrange Township. Why did? Why do we have something about pools in here now? Like, were we starting to find all these weird things?
Go ahead. Uh, we'll have to read the minutes and see what. Happened.
Okay.
I don't know. I wasn't here. That wanted Christie to do the ordinance, so I did.
Cause I can tell you. Well, I don't want to speak for the rest of the board members, but I'm pretty sure I could safely say. I don't know that the board fully understands what's going on with this right now. I mean, certainly, if there was, if there was somebody. Well, if there was somebody that tasked the planning commission or tasked whoever to rewrite this thing. There's all new board members now, like it wasn't who's on the board now. And so I think they're hearing, oh, this is getting rewritten. This is getting rewritten. This is getting written and. Nobody's seen anything since twenty twenty two. So I mean, I can see why people are going, what in the hell is going on with this draft?
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, it's seven o'clock, so we need to move into our next one.
It has been an education to discuss all this.
Yeah, yeah.
So I will, I will put some sort of timeline as much as I can. Um, I know that the minutes are on the website. I'm not sure how far back I can go.
They go back pretty far, I think.
So, um, you know, basically, we'll have to just read the minutes and see kind of what happened, but. That's, yeah, and then. Beth was and then Christie, I she wasn't here much longer after I left, I don't think.
Mm hmm. And Beth left around the same time, too.
So. Then I don't know how much they worked on after I left. So we'll have to read the planning commission minutes to see.
Okay.
What was discussed at the minute, at the meeting for the ordinance. But Christie was the one who was doing.
Certainly.
The formatting. And inputting. The discussion into the ordinance.
Do you remember how we just used to have so many papers that we were all like, wait a minute, what? Wait, what is happening?
I didn't do anything.
Right. We have the thing.
Hold on, and then I'm gonna make the corrections and then. For well, no, right, we're gonna do.
Thank you. Well, it's good to. Kind of get to the bottom of it.
I mean, you do make a good point, Dave. We've read through this ad nauseam. Especially you guys down that end. Trevor and I are newer.
Yeah, I do. The format is easy to read, but. And and I like it.
Added in here.
Yeah.
That.
Maybe isn't in our ordinance. No. That's ridiculous.
And although we almost halfway through.
Yeah.
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 Um, so any public comments?
Unless you take the red down and a little slower.
What?
So we're. Okay, closing. I I forgot I was taking them.
Oh, yeah, at seven oh two. Closing that. Yeah, and then we have to adjourn this one, but there says public comments, so Dixie.
Oh, that'd be okay, yes.
Yeah, okay. So I need to move, I moved to adjourn the meeting. That.
Second.
Okay. I moved Trevor second. All in favor?
All.
Hi, all any nays? Okay. Okay. I'm gonna call the regular meeting. To order at seven oh five. We don't need to do the bunch of reasons again. Uh, roll call. Dave Marceletti. Trevor Phillips.
Here.
Cheryl Bull here, Jason Ball.
Here.
Okay, let's take a look at the agenda and then I'll need a mo- a motion to approve. Hmm. Oh.
I was reading the agenda and I'm like, oh, yeah, we actually have business to do at this one.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Sorry, I don't I don't know how to make it better.
Yeah.
We'll figure it out.
Yeah. We need motion to approve the agenda. Unless there's any amendments you got.
No, I'm not sure.
Trevor, motion to approve the agenda.
I'll second.
Dave second. All in favor? Aye, any nays? Okay. Um, and then we need to look at the previous meeting minutes.
So I know I never received the corrected minutes from Anita.
Okay.
So I don't know if you want to maybe postpone the decision. So.
To approve the minutes?
Correct. So in her draft minutes, such a regular meeting, she has all this highlighted stuff.
Yeah.
All that highlighted stuff to go into our special meeting.
Okay.
And I had emailed it to her, but she never corrected it.
Did not email it back.
It's not on the website either, so.
Okay, so we're gonna have to postpone that and do that in the January meeting.
That I would suggest that because um. On the regular minutes down at the bottom are number J and then it's all highlighted. We talked about all that stuff in our in our social meeting.
Okay.
So and those. Yeah.
Okay.
Or I'm sorry, I take that back. So um where it says notes from the meeting.
Yeah, that's special.
Yeah, so notes from the meeting need to go into the minutes of the special meeting. Yeah, so the special meeting minutes should then also include the notes.
I don't even know if I have those in my packet. Why don't we not see them? Okay.
Um, they actually were probably not in there, so I didn't have them on, so.
Right, okay.
Couldn't we not just approve those with revisions? And say those highlighted sections will be moved over to the special meeting minutes?
Okay. So we can approve.
I think the rest of it looks good.
Okay, yeah, with the correct, okay, cause yeah, she can make corrections.
All in favor of approving them with corrections? Oh, we got a motion. I need a motion. Sorry.
Did Jason make the motion?
Didn't I?
Nope.
Oh.
I'll make the motion to approve the meeting minutes uh with the corrections as noted.
I'll second it.
Trevor second, so all in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
I think I might have this in the Word document, so I might be able to do the credit.
Okay. All right, so any public comments?
Um, I have a public comment regarding.
Um. You can do it now.
The packet that I received, I have a couple of um. Different points in there. I'm gonna jump in on.
Okay.
The first one, um. Is compared to um Danny's.
Mm hmm.
Um, papers where um. If um Danny's. Rosalow, that is full up the local road. And that um. That it's not really good for the area within the government when they were already giving local roads. So I'm I'm opposed to putting the battery storage unit on um a local way. I believe it should be on.
And then and you're referring to which um?
Well, it it starts here. Um. About the Danny story.
Is it the resolution from the board?
No, I I.
Oh, okay.
And so we were saying that it would want to have to be a more substantial road. I do not want where I live. A commercial road in front of my house. So I'm I'm opposed of the battery storage unit on video.
Okay.
If by chance we have one at all. Okay, so that's one. Then um I'm looking at the amendment to article four of the general provision. Three about minimum dwelling size. It looks to me like that is the same as what's in the current ordinance. I didn't see any changes to that.
It's different. The current ordinance. Has a second part where if you have three bedrooms, it adds a hundred and fifty additional square feet.
Mm hmm, and we've taken that away. So you don't have to have that.
So you're saying that any any structure can be seven hundred and fifty square feet.
Seven hundred and twenty. Which is the minimum. Minimum for the state or something, yeah.
And then it. It shows about foundations, about construction is being completed, something involving the laws and regulations that Michigan has in place. The time amended. It's not been like elected to the state initiative. So I I just started looking on the internet. And I came up with the first permanent foundation for currently has um concrete and blocks. And usually very representative code has in there about wood foundations that'll be designed and installed in points with A W C P W F. Okay, so I went to the American Wood Council Permanent Wood Foundation. And under section three point two point four, it says soils. And it has like all different types of soils listed. And it's saying the poor drainage or unsatisfactory drainage. You can't have the soil acidification of it. They list them. They're not permitted for use in a P W F basement or crawl space. So are we going to have a civil engineer or an architectural engineer or whatever can determine? Um, what type of soil is in order for them to have wood structured foundation?
Were you coached by Ken on that? Were you coached by Ken on that? Okay. So.
The answer is no.
Yeah, the that. Uh, foundation amendment that you're referring to relates to. Us. Trying to pass a tax amendment that would permit barn dominions. Barn dominions do not have foundations. So the wood foundation research you did is irrelevant because a barn dominion doesn't have a foundation. That's the point. Our current ordinance. Only require dwellings with foundations and we are saying we would like to remove that. Um. Prerequisite. So that people can build a barn dominium.
But well, I'm trying to take that back. If someone presented a plan with a good.
Wood foundation, which the.
The applicant would have to submit engineering for that themselves.
Right.
We wouldn't have an engineer. They would submit the engineering themselves.
But we're not even talking about wooden foundations.
But we have had some, if the water table is too high, there is provisions. Um, so that it has happened before there. You know. If there is a case and that happens, then yes. There there's provisions in the code and if there needed to be an engineer, then it would.
Then it would be on the person on the. Person who owns the property, not on the township to provide that.
They use pools that go down. Um, they can't get the water table, right? Because otherwise it'll rot off. So that would be.
But you don't.
You put.
You you put concrete in it with.
The same, the same thing happens. Here, we have a builder here. Same thing happens with a concrete foundation.
Now you just use like.
Right.
Concrete, but then you put dirt around it.
Right.
Well, what happens is they found over the years that when you put the concrete around the posts. The concretes hold the moisture and it starts to deteriorate the pole. So. Most of your treated lumber is rated for seventy years. Now, whether you ever get that out of there or not, I don't know, but. So they're designed for ground contact.
Might the lumber mill box. It's broken off if it's winter when the snow fell, when the snow up.
That's a lot worse. So I guess what are we assuming that? That all but anyone who wants to build a barn dominium is gonna build it where the water table is. Such or something? I mean, are we gonna assume that or?
Um, whether. Um, who's gonna go down to the water table and see whether their foundation would rot.
Well, you would know when they dug the footing.
Poising if it's going to, and that would be on the.
Inspector.
Inspector and the property owner.
Yeah, but you're saying they follow the Michigan code. The Michigan code um.
Allows for barn mini.
A W C P P W F.
Correct.
Which which then gets you into the soil types and the sampling and whatever.
If, if, if it have, if it comes up, I mean, it's not gonna happen in, you know.
So actually, what's your comment, Dixie?
My, my comment is if we have here that you're following the state and Michigan code and you're going to have wood foundation that there, that based on the AWC, the American Wood Council Permanent Wood Foundation code, it states that you need to have someone test the soil, determine whatever, how it goes at my feet. You can't put it in clay, what I read. So I think they need to have, um, I don't know what they call it, maybe a civil engineer, um, professional engineer. Then does the state of Michigan require their certification with that? Or not? I don't know.
I'm, I'm wondering if.
Hold on. That would be the, the property owners.
I'm wondering if Dixie, these comments would be more appropriate for the board meeting because what this body has done with the text amendments has already moved on to the board. So I don't know what good these public comments do here. When the board takes up those text amendments, I feel like those comments would be appropriate at the board. Is that correct, Tasha?
No.
No.
Uh-uh. I think you might have. I printed, I gave you a copy of our tonight's agenda.
Okay.
Okay, so you said taking that up with the board. It should be on the board's agenda next Tuesday. Yeah, we've already.
Our agenda is calendar, workable ordinance, battery storage.
Okay, I don't know what packet you have.
Well, it says here about special land use provision and continuing on board and updates. So I have this text amendment.
Yeah, special avenues of what we talked about already earlier.
That was for the six o'clock special meeting.
Be done with the barn, with the foundation. That's, that's already had a public hearing, done to the county and it's to the board.
And the county, yeah.
Okay, so that means, I mean, take that up with the county township board.
Right, yes.
It should hopefully be on their agenda on Tuesday.
Oh. Wait. Well, what I have here, sorry to take up your time, but it looks like Van Buren County, they can come to it. So you're saying.
Van Buren County had comments about the accessory dwelling unit.
Yeah.
Or the accessory building on the vacant lot.
Yeah.
This is still something you should take up with the board.
And they're just an advisory board.
Yeah, we don't, yeah, they don't have to.
Or I don't really.
So I have a communication received that I'm going to share. I got a, um, uh, an email from Andrew, Andrew Beauchamp, Beauchamp um, that he said, I am writing to see if there are, have been any changes or proposed changes to the current foundation wall requirements for the township. I own a parcel of land on Saddle Lake and I'm interested to hear if the commission is considering altering the requirement that a home must have a continuous frost depth foundation wall. Thank you for your time and work. I know how underappreciated and necessary the commission work can be. Best, Andrew. And I responded to him that the planning commission had submitted text amendment to the Board of Trustees to approve. Um, I do believe the supervisor has that and has not brought it up for a vote. I will forward your email to our zoning administrator, Tasha, and she can, um, she can note your inquiry. And then, um, Tasha said there's been a little miscommunication with getting the text on the board agenda. And I am sending them again. The supervisor prepares the agenda. You'll need to contact him on Friday or Monday to see if the amendment will be on the agenda. Our agendas, or the agendas are posted on the Columbia website. So that was another inquiry for a barn dominium that we've received.
So is a wood foundation different than post-prime construction?
I don't think so.
I don't think they're the same thing.
I mean, to me, foundations, concrete.
Nation would be, it's in a concrete, you're using wood.
Right. And most, yeah, and most places aren't gonna let you do wood foundation. And that, you know.
Our systems to put a wood basement in, using all pressure treated plywood.
Yeah, they, yeah. I don't do that very often, but.
Yeah, I probably wouldn't be.
But that's a different, that's a different foundation than what you'd put in for a
Right.
than what you'd put in for, say, a barn dominium or a pole barn or whatever, because they don't go down as far.
Well, it goes down the same.
Well, but they don't have a base, yeah.
Not a full perimeter foundation, they're just.
Right.
Correct.
Yeah.
Our wood.
Yeah. I mean, how many pole barns do you see falling down in twenty years?
Um, I.
No.
Exactly.
Other than during construction. Somebody didn't brace something, right?
That's my memo to the township board.
Okay, that's what I got and that's what I did all my research on. Oh, this packet.
That's for the board meeting. That's not for the planning commission.
Okay.
It says to the board, right? To the board?
She took that.
Well, yeah, but you have.
Took the packet to the board.
My packet to the board, to put on their agenda to adopt the text amendment.
Is that the new one that you just sent?
Yes.
Is that on the website?
I don't know.
Oh, okay.
Well, that, that's what I assumed that I actually read through and analyzed.
That's for the boards, yeah. It's not funny. Correct, yeah. Those are all for the board. Yes. She has the memo I sent to the board for the text amendment. That's what she's referring to.
How would she have gotten that?
How'd you get that?
Oh.
Thanks a lot.
Okay.
Interesting. Okay, um, any other public comments? No, okay. New business, the twenty twenty-five meeting calendar. Um, I will tell you guys that you can do the calendar. Um, I sent a letter of, um, I sent an email requesting to be reappointed to the board, um, because I feel that you know, we're in the midst of doing a lot of work with the Vesper coming up. I think it's good to have a stable board. Um, Ken has declined to reappoint me for approval by the board. And so this is my last meeting of the PC. So good luck. Um. You'll get to be without me, but, um, so, yeah, good luck. Anyway, go ahead and set your calendar.
So our current adopted calendar actually goes through March of twenty twenty-five, but I just kind of thought I would do it ahead of time. So we just had it all. So it's the same second Wednesday of the month at seven o'clock. These were the dates. I don't think it interferes with any holidays. So. Would like to keep. Keep it.
You guys wanna keep the same calendar Wednesdays?
Yeah, that's, yeah.
Okay. We need, do they need approval? We need to, okay, I need a motion.
My motion to adopt calendar.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
If we don't have a quorum, I guess I can vote.
Yeah, you can still.
Okay, um, the workable ordinance for the battery storage to amend. So there was a resolution passed by the board.
Well, let's start with the first email from Ken. So Ken sent me an email. The township board passed a resolution to return the workable ordinance back to the planning commission to reconsider the options based on information obtained during the November thirteenth planning commission meeting. I've attached the resolution along with a few documents on placement of renewable energy within the boundaries of the township. These documents were presented as part of the agenda item on the resolution. Uh, Foster Swift recommended we use fifty megawatt renewable instead of ten. So it must have already been a resolution. I don't really know what that part means. So basically, the planning commission is kicking back the ordinance for us to review it.
The board is?
The board. Um, so the resolution is very long. I don't know that that really has anything to do. Do you wanna read it or is that?
Well, um, if we adopt its resolution, that means you don't read a zoning ordinance.
So the board actually knows the resolution. This is their proposed resolution. Um, maybe we should read it. You wanna read it, Cheryl, or?
Yeah, I can. Hey, so where should I start?
Start at the beginning of the, that way we can, we all know what.
The beginning, the beginning.
Do you want us to start reading it for ourselves?
Yes, just read it for ourselves.
Basically establishes the Creo, that's what it's doing.
Mm-hmm.
Instead of a workable, we'll then have a Creo. Commending the workable ordinance back to the planning commission. Planning commission to consider the following alternatives to the workable ordinance.
What does this mean? If we adopt the overlay district, then we don't need a workable ordinance?
I, I don't understand any of this at all. I don't, I honestly do not know what it means at all.
This would be something, this would be something that we should probably have our zoning attorney at the meeting for, I think. Because there's, it, it's a bit circular.
I don't really know what the.
But the objective is.
The resolution, so the resolution is to send back to the planning commission. The board needs a resolution to do that? And why is it so fancy? I.
I don't think a resolution was needed, but a resolution was issued to make it seem more serious.
Okay. So at the end, basically, the board remands the recommendation back to directs them to consider the following alternatives to the workable ordinance and make recommendations. Renewal and overlay, adopt a state Creo or do nothing. So what if you say just do nothing? So it's giving you these four options. Does he want you to say do nothing?
Okay.
So when the attorneys were here, there were two attorneys, they had two opposing methods to deal with that.
Correct.
So that they actually confused the, the issue.
Which is fine, but.
Yeah.
It wasn't, I didn't feel like it was that confusing.
Catherine was like, he's your attorney, like.
He's the board attorney.
He said, we have different opinions, but she wasn't forcing her opinion on the township. She was just, this is what we do. And he was like, this is what we do. So in that situation, Foster Swift would be the one as the attorney, so.
So Foster Swift recommended the, the overlay district. Right?
I do believe.
They said that that was a way, an overlay district was a way of containing
Correct.
where they go in, in, but.
As a workable, it's still a workable ordinance.
Right.
But correct.
With an overlay, but also whether that could be considered more restrictive, depending on what that, what is it, MC? What is it? The MC, what is it, MCSP or whatever?
Yeah.
Decides in, MPSC, whatever they decide with, when they actually take the legislation and you know what I mean, drop it down and, and come up with guidelines.
He kind of provided a map, a kind of outline where this is where the consumer's wanting.
So I, I don't have a whole lot of content, I mean, the.
This particular map, I'm guessing is I'm gonna say the board. I don't know who I should say is recommending this as the overlay. So.
And this is in the A, right?
So Consumers Energy owns nineteen acres right here.
Mm-hmm.
So I think he thinks of that, this little area, there's less houses right here in this area for the overlay to where.
However, if you're referring back to the master plan, what the citizens want. And then all of a sudden, you're just gonna, but do, decide where the overlay goes, whereas it, that seems like exactly what's happening where it is now. There's, I mean, shouldn't there be like some sort of public hearing held about where that overlay is gonna go so people can say not in my backyard and that kind of thing?
Again, because this is a significant change to our ordinance because we're creating an overlay.
Right.
So we would have another public hearing.
So if we create this overlay district, like an industrial overlay district, that's where they're gonna have to put their stuff.
Correct. So it would, it would probably be called a renewable they probably call a utility scale renewable energy overlay.
Would that be just for, uh, I gotta stand up, sorry, I hurt my leg. Um, would that just be for battery storage? Would that also be for solar and wind? Are those gonna be separate ordinances? My question is, is this?
Well, this is.
Before we get too far down the road, Dave, I wanna, I wanna add something you just said.
Oh, it says, it says right here in number two, down here, the first page, number two.
Yeah.
Generate a renewable overlay, identify locations for.
Yes.
Batteries, solar and wind. So correct. That's the only location that would be.
Yeah, I don't know if the state.
So is this a different location than this location?
I think so, yeah.
Um, they're the same, they're just one is blown up.
Oh.
Yeah.
Well, I'm good. Right, it's a thirty-two, just blown up.
Okay.
See it. I kind of made it yellow, you know, pink a little, can you kind of see it?
Oh, I see, okay. What were you gonna say, Jason?
When Dave says if we create an overlay district, that's where they need to go. I believe that is only true if Foster Swift wins their lawsuit.
Yes, exactly. Yeah.
Okay.
Because the lawsuit is geared toward
Right.
us being able to say where.
Where.
Whereas currently, right now, the MPSC says we can put it wherever we want, which is why we have the proposed site where it is now. So I think what Michael said when he was here was it might be best to do both.
Do both, uh, an overlay?
Create an overlay district in preparation for that potential eventuality.
Have two drafts.
And then.
One if it passes and one if it doesn't, or, know what you mean?
Well, cre- creating an overlay district is different than drafting ordinances for the renewable facilities themselves, isn't it?
So all of the text still applies, but it, then it goes in here. But we only have the battery storage. Yeah, this text doesn't go away.
It's so, we, we would just add a section in that, in that amendment to the, to the text saying this is the overlay, we've created an overlay district and this is.
Special aid, so it's gonna go in our special aid due section.
But we would say it has to go in the overlay.
This text would basically all be the same.
Yeah.
This, yeah, the, the text that we draft that doesn't go away, we're just limiting where it goes.
So should we have two versions? So that if the lawsuit, if they're successful in their lawsuit, quick pass that one? And then if they're not, keep the one that we have? Or, I don't know.
If they're not successful, then the rest of it just goes wherever they want. Right?
Well, not if they agree to go with our workable ordinance.
I think the, it's a policy that the board needs to make. The board needs to decide on which of these four that they wanna do. And I don't know why they give it back to the planning commission. They need to decide if they, what they want.
Which of the four?
So I guess we could recommend.
We already did recommend. We recommended a workable ordinance. And then it came back to us to decide between those. The, the, the planning commission. The, the, the planning commission recommended a workable ordinance. So yeah, we sent it to the board. The board needs to decide if they want a Creo. If they want nothing, or if they want a workable ordinance with an overlay.
This, it reads that they want to have an overlay. So why not just say that? I just feel like it's. We're just.
Posturing, it's just posturing.
Hey.
And. And, I mean.
If you don't like the ordinance, that's fine, and that's your.
Yeah, that's, that's great.
Commission, and I feel like we have. Half of the direction that we, that they would like us to do and.
And I guess, I mean. Is in this, this overlay district suggested in thirty-two, is it because, is that the only property that consumers owns in the township?
And it's by the.
Their line.
Their, correct. Their event, correct.
Which would make sense.
It's relatively fine and direct.
But the other thing is.
Yeah.
Then consumers would have to. Either, I guess this is, the consumers would have to then lease the property to Vesper, or one of these. One of these homeowners would have to lease it, okay? What if the homeowner say, nope, we're not leasing it?
Then we're.
And consumer says, no, we're not gonna lease it to you.
Then it, then it doesn't happen, to the, start from the underlying property owner, yes.
But if they lose, if Foster Swift, if this lawsuit isn't successful. All that goes away anyway.
Correct.
Okay.
And then the other part of this particular area was there's less residences.
Mm-hmm.
Like, was kind of part, well, something I got in.
But what kind of agriculture is there? I wonder, and if that's gonna be.
So up at the top, as part of this map. It's an isolated area, no limited. Uh, residential.
What does that mean?
I mean, that there's less, there's. There's less residential in this particular area. So this would be a better spot for it to go because there's less.
This big area, it goes like, corn soil, you can grow.
Okay.
Did you add these maps?
No. This is part of. The packet that Ken sent to me.
Did you make the notes on the maps?
I, I, yes, because they were up here at the top and when I printed it, it.
I see.
Yeah, so in his email, it was like up here. But when I printed the map, it didn't. So the words I wrote is what was on the map. But I'm not sure why we need the lakes and streams.
Yeah, I don't know.
Because the current one. Streams on, yeah. So the current facility is, you know, right here. Thing.
Down in, uh, yeah.
So, but this little area.
Thirty-two is at three eighty.
For the consumer's power. Buster gonna lock area for solar plants. So. Where is that?
So the, the board direction is to have all the renewable in this area. So wind, solar, this is the only area that those can go.
So now, like, coming into Breedsville on two fifteen. As you cross twenty-fourth Avenue, right there on the west side of the road, their, their main power lines run right there. That's wide open. And the elevation is. A hundred foot higher than this proposed site. Now, I don't know if they've looked at that. Or if people aren't willing to sell that land. That's wide open, way more than what's proposed.
It's a big farms and vineyards, and as you know, um, the owner fronts two fifteen is a cornfield. I'm not sure what's under twenty-four.
Right.
There are some houses down twenty-fourth, but they're a little further down.
Yeah, a little farther west, correct.
Cause right where this stuff is, it's along twenty-fourth, it's kind of wet.
Right.
Yeah. So if they have an access road, it would have to come around, undo the power one.
Tasha. Remedial question here. Can we just? Decide to put an industrial overlay district over the top of residential properties?
You mean a. It wouldn't be industrial, it'd be energy.
Well, essentially, you're.
It's industrial.
It's an industrial thing.
Yeah.
If you're wanting it on a county road and you're wanting, I mean.
Well, the answer is yes, you can put an overlay wherever you would like in your township. You have a commercial one in Grand Junction, in where it's mostly residential, so. Yes, it would be, yes. Like marijuana, South Haven, they picked a marijuana overlay district. And it's, you know, there are some houses that are in the district, but for the most part, they try to pick the ones without houses. So, but yes.
Does that ever open the township up to lawsuits?
No. Well, I mean, not yet, but no. The township can decide where they want things. I think. This. If the attorney says we can have this.
Maybe.
I think this could be something that can be challengeable because our district is so small. But. We have other, our industrial district is really small. We only have like one property. So if you kind of compare apples to apples, it's kind of the same thing, so. You, you prefer to have this one piece of industrial and not more, and that's your choice. But on the other hand, there's the exclusionary zone, where you can exclude. A use, but it's, I think it's needed or something. So then there's, yeah. Like the campground, the campground is needed, then we have to allow it in our ordinance or it's exclusionary zone.
So.
But.
Is, so are we saying that this overlay is nineteen acres?
No.
Or we're saying it's just in this? Section thirty-two?
If I were. Interpreting, I would think this map blown up. Is the overlay.
Section thirty. Thirty-two then? Or is it?
Well, probably not the whole section, but I mean.
Tasha, can you do the, um, can you define on the left, Consumer's Energy, and then go, um, to the top of the building that's on here?
Uh. Yeah, cause you wanna have like the whole parcel.
You, you can take. Well, you can't take the Michigan Nature Association one.
You're saying, yeah. But doesn't that get us back to the state that's Michigan Nature Association? Yeah, right.
Specifically tell us where he would want the district, I guess, or which parcel.
But what is interesting is, it's on, you know, if there's a nature association that there's probably, or what are those, considered forests or wetlands or something? There, what are they?
Probably in that nature.
Probably conservations and so on.
Okay, and then it's almost like the same thing as where you're putting it now. I mean, except that it's a different.
Well, butts right to, it's cornered.
Right, exactly, so there's gonna be.
Industrial.
There's gonna be problems with that, too.
Just.
But, or the property owner would make it that for tax purposes, okay?
Oh, yeah. Association, I remember, not, not in Michigan.
Well, so. We'd have to have a public hearing, right? After we drafted the. Language about where the overdraft would, or where the overlay would be.
Right, so it would be like, it's own zone district. So we'd have to create another zoning district, which in our draft, we have that reserved one. We're gonna keep that one, so it would have its own zoning district.
Should we send this back to the board for clarification of exactly what they'd like us to do?
I.
Before we do any work. Send it back to the board, ask for clarification. Are you asking us to do? An overlay? We've made a recommendation to the board. This is of a workable ordinance. Would you like us to put? An overlay? In?
Or, yeah, what is your, what is your specific overlay, like?
We need dimension, or, or you know what I mean? We need to know where that is, so.
We put together ourselves and then send it to them?
Hope for the best? No, I think we need direction. I think we need clarification. We made recommendations. And. We need, the PC needs clarifications, otherwise, we're gonna get right back into the whole spinning of the wheels. And nothing gets done. And that whole thing, and that's ridiculous.
Um, well, I think that they do, they've been.
Yeah, the four, decide to do the four things. Decide.
Right, decide to do one of the four things. Well, we've already decided on one thing, which is a workable ordinance, and that's what we sent. And that's what we sent to the board was a workable ordinance.
And they rejected it, right?
And there's, they sent, and the res- resolution came back to try one of these four things. Well, which four thing do you want?
It says such considerations. So I'm, I'm thinking that they, well, nevermind, I'm.
Yeah, so the very last paragraph. Directs to an overlay district. And this is the. The one little overlay area that we get to choose. What if we don't want it here? What if we want it somewhere else? What if we wanna put it up there?
Yeah. Right.
So basically.
Well, this seems like a lot of red tape to me. And if they've already purchased this property, they're gonna override any decisions that are made. I mean, are they willing to?
Vesper?
Yeah.
They're gonna go to the state.
Well, if they've given this gentleman that owned this property all that money already, they're not gonna renege on that. I mean, so they're gonna go forth regardless of what is.
And if they have, if they have spent ten thousand dollars.
You know, with four thousand dollars, nothing.
Which they haven't because they don't have an approved site plan.
Okay, that's true.
So they've purchased this property. How can they do that if there is an approved site plan?
They can purchase the property.
They're only leasing it, they don't.
Leasing the property.
They're still paying Mr. Wilcox every month to keep the lease.
Well, just keep, this says owned by Consumers Energy, unless that's just the power.
Thirty-two, yeah, that's the.
Well, that's the site, right?
No, that's not Vesper.
That's not Vesper's current site, this is the one that, that the overlay is being.
I got you, I got you.
Would be the best area for the overlay.
Got you.
So we kind of just need to.
Well, we need to know, like, how many acres?
Make the map a little better, so.
We need to know how many acres that we, maybe we should send it back with questions to the board. We should send the resolution back with questions. Because I would wanna know, how many acres do we wanna make it? Um.
Well, they can give us.
It's not acres, it's the overlay. So the overlay is. But how, you know.
How big?
Well, but.
Cut out the busy bee farm here, but like, where are we going to this next?
Well, that's what I mean, I mean, like, how many, is it just the nineteen acres, or is it all of busy, you know, all of these farms here?
This blown up man.
Right, what is it?
I, I would like to think. You couldn't only just say this one parcel is the only parcel that you could use.
That's not gonna fly. No, I don't think that would work.
So we need, we need property ID numbers or something.
Correct.
Yes.
So we can't really do anything with it.
So. The board liaison. If you could possibly help.
Do I need to?
If this is the map that they would like us to start with, and it doesn't include?
I'd like, I guess I'd like to hear what Dixie has to say right now. Cause you seem to be pretty informed.
I'm not necessarily informed. I, I was at the meeting that you were at.
Yeah.
And basically what the board said is, it has to go back to the planning commission. The planning commission has a function that they have to do. The board cannot tell the planning commission what it is they need to do, they need to have a determination. Here are our recommendations, but it's up to the planning commission to do what they're doing, it needs to be done.
I think we should do number D.
Which is, we don't, we just send. Letter D?
And, no, that's a lie. The board is telling us what they want. This is where they want the overlay.
Well, and the board can say, the board can say, we don't like what you did. I mean, but.
Consider. Okay.
And, okay.
As, as, as a resident, like, like I mentioned before, and, and I might be speaking out of turn. I do not want it at the current location that it's at. I live on twenty-fourth. I do not want my road ruined. I do not want, um, that near me. I would rather have it in a area of the township towards the heat farm, which is a. It's a cornfield. No one is wanting to be disturbed. It's next to county road two fifteen, which is a class, whatever type of road that heart, that big semis can travel on, which is more conducive. And if these people jump the gun, lease property before they have everything settled, well, then that's just a cost of doing business.
But it also goes on twenty-fourth, so.
But that part of twenty-fourth is dirt.
It's dirt.
And you could think like, if busy bee is part of the overlay district, they would probably lease all the property, it's, it's a cornfield. They would probably lease it from busy bee. They would drive in off from two fifteen on a busy bee property, which is not, um, ruining any of our local roads. And it's away from residential areas.
Well, there are houses. There are two.
Well, there's really.
There should be no place that you're not.
So.
There's, there was nothing, I don't think there's anything.
These are just owners, but there's not actual dwellings, okay?
Because it's all kind of soggy and wet.
Okay.
Yeah, this is all shown east of two fifteen.
Yeah.
The site I was talking about's. Here, west of two fifteen. It's right under the power lines, just like it is now. And it's like five times the size.
And it's already weighing that square and speaking long. And it's not low.
Well, I don't think we can, we could say, I mean, the, the planning commission could recommend, say, yeah, this seems like a pretty good place for an overlay, but.
Yeah, have to be more specific.
Yeah, great, how big is it gonna be? What do you, you know?
I think we just start with this map. I think we create a new zoning section. Called the overlay. And.
So I won't be part of the deliberation on this, but here's what I would say if. If it cut, if we, if we do this, I would wanna know. Like, what is the expectation? It, I don't know, it just seems like, create this. I mean, how big does it need to be? Does it need to be a thousand acres? Does it need to be a hundred acres? How big should it be? Does it gonna, is it gonna, do we have to include solar and wind? That we could allow that, they could sell for that, you know, they could lease the land for that? Is it gonna encompass all of that?
I, I fully believe it's just this area right here.
And how big is that area?
Thank you.
Well. Two hundred megawatts. Requires, what's, what was it, six hundred acres of solar pounds? Is that something?
Something like that.
Some panel.
Well, if we're gonna put fifty megawatts, we need it. Porter six hundred eight, one fifty.
No, one, one, one fifty is one point two megawatts.
Where, are you getting that from though?
Is five point eight, total megawatts. Seven.
And this is in this resolution?
Needs to produce. Seven megawatts.
And where did that information come from?
So I, I can speak to this. Um. This may not be the exact right way to say this, but this resolution. Is kind of laced within innuendo. The whole idea of the megawatt thing. Is. Ha, if you remember from the meeting. Which. Ken did not attend. Michael talked about. The. Possibility or the recommendation of approaching these type of scenarios with.
Right.
Demonstrated energy use.
Right.
Which is number.
Which. Just incidentally, I'm just putting this out there, I believe that Catherine's firm. Disagrees with.
Correct.
So. I think. Interpreting this resolution that Ken wrote. I think what he is saying is, we should try to write into our ordinances. Somehow limiting. The megawatts. That can come into our township based on demonstrated needs.
That's number nine, okay.
So. However. This is, I, I'm, I said I wasn't gonna vote in this meeting.
Yeah.
So. I'm not gonna vote, and I'm not gonna make. I know, I'm not gonna make a vote or a motion or anything, but I will say. Everything that we've talked about tonight in terms of an overlay district actually working and being enforceable. And these megawatt restrictions and demonstrated energy use and all that is. Not.
Speculative.
It's speculative.
Yeah.
Because we don't know what's gonna happen with the lawsuit, we don't know what's gonna, and. We can make an overlay district and say, boy, it'd be great to have this thing going, busy bee farm, busy bee farm doesn't have to sell the property. You know, I, so. What I would feel compelled to do as a planning commission is get legal counsel on this.
Yeah.
It's too complicated. Like for us just to say, let's create an overlay district here and let's, because.
No, that's what the text would say.
Well, and, and there's also the notion of, Michael said. That the Creo, they would recommend a Creo versus a workable ordinance. In particular, if the stay gets enforced with the lawsuit. And we don't even understand all the, all the technicalities of Creo yet. Because we decided we were going with the workable ordinance based on Catherine's recommendations, so. I did, I don't know about anybody else on this commission, but I'm not sure. With all those variables and legal ramifications. That we should make a recommendation without having Michael help guide us through that.
I have a note to myself when I read this, that we should pass this to the attorney for direction.
So, you know, our discussion back to the township board would be. Um, we kind of really need to know the outcome of the lawsuit.
Yeah.
Is part of it, and then you would prefer to have legal counsel help draft the text.
Right.
Well.
Or, or get legal, yeah, have legal counsel.
Or at least know how to navigate.
Navigate. Don't you think?
Right, yeah, I don't know.
It's a, it's a moving target.
Yeah.
As soon as we make a decision, someone will say, oh, forget all that stuff and we've got a different idea.
So.
That's what's happened so far.
Right. Or we just, we don't know. We don't know in, in, until we find out if there's a stay.
Spending money, have, you know, attorneys review to get us an ordinance when we don't know.
I just think.
Way it's going, so.
Plus, um. I, I'm sure everybody's.
I don't.
I'm sure everybody's thought of this, but we are past the November twenty ninth deadline. So technically Vesper could take it to the state now if they wanted.
Yeah.
Unless Michael got stay.
Did we hear whether it?
I haven't heard.
I haven't heard either.
I, yeah, I don't know.
I, I, I don't think we should do anything on this because I just, I think it's too nebula. I think it's nebulous. I mean, we could do any of these things. We recommend, you know, I don't know what the overlay is gonna look like because it's.
I just keep reading this over and over and over, so. We would like you to consider these four things, and then the last paragraph says, should it include any proposed overlay district?
So.
So why give us the more options?
Options if what, right, what is desired is the overlay. And I don't know like where the, the projected numbers came from.
I don't, he was doing some math and his, he did the math when he was here.
Who, Michael? Okay. I think that was, I think that was just, that was like. Um, represent or, or examples, because I think it was in conjunction with another. With somebody else, another township that he had helped. It wasn't based on our township.
And then so landowners don't get a say on the overlay, that, you know, you're just taking agricultural that they own and then you're gonna turn it in. You know, industrial. I mean, don't they have some type of opinion in that or?
They had meetings, everyone from Grand Junction came to the meetings. They made discussions, they determined. Um, what size building that they will allow, commercial buildings, then the overlay district. What type of barriers they might have to have next to houses, how many parking spaces that they might have to have, the size of the structure, all of that. That's all the stuff that comes from the overlay district and what, and the people in that area have input into it.
So it would be up to the township, if there are more than eleven parcels, the township is not required to notice everyone. They probably should be discussed, but. Michigan Enabling Active, there's rezoning for eleven or more parcels. You do not have to individually notice them.
I think that would.
Really?
I think that would be a really bad move, uh, the part of the township not to, not to. Get everybody noticed and just put it out there because people, because our communication system is abysmal.
Yeah.
Communicating to the public.
Say, you know, they're not required to sell to the.
Right.
Company. They don't have to do anything. I mean, but, you know, it's, you know, it's gotta go somewhere. If we gotta have it, it's gotta go somewhere and. This is where it's proposed to go. I'm sorry you live by the Consumers Energy, but.
Right, right.
Well, then I say to those people, make them give you the highest offer you can and get out.
So, I don't know, we need to come up, I mean, I think we should. Table this ref- for right now and not do anything with it until.
Well, I think.
Get some.
You know, as a planning commission liaison back to the board at their meeting, planning commission discussed. You know, then, then it's probably won't be ready to show them, but.
If you made notes for your.
You know, the lawsuit is still going on.
If every decision we make is gonna be wrong, we might as well not make it.
Right.
Or prefer to have, or.
Well.
Legal counsel help draft.
Draft the or, yeah, draft the overlay text and, um.
Do we wanna back it up one step further than that though, and say we'd prefer to have legal counsel? Work with us through these four options to see what's the best one.
I, I think so, because.
Which, which legal counsel? You're gonna get two different.
Two differing opinions, which is fine, because then.
Well, I think in the case of the Creo, Catherine deferred to my fault. Yeah, I think she said, as township attorney. And the guy who initiated the lawsuit in terms of if you were to go down the road of a Creo, she recommends working with Michael.
So then.
Is that, is that what you guys remember?
Yes, and so then.
Legal counsel, the board can decide.
Yeah.
Person does, yeah.
Um, or if we decide to go with a workable order, we'll contact Catherine for a workable order language or, you know, whatever, or.
Cool.
I mean, we have a, a workable ordinance.
I don't remember, did Columbia Township to decide to get on that lawsuit?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Wha- what is interesting, Tasha, maybe this is to your point as well, if you read ten, it says.
Yeah.
Directs the planning commission to consider the following alternatives to a workable ordinance, and then the first one they want us to consider is a workable ordinance.
The overlay district, and then the very last paragraph says it has to be an overlay district.
Okay, I'll bring that, I'll, I'll start with that.
Well, I think if we, if the planning commission is gonna do an overlay district, because that's what. Apparently the board wants, then I think I would, I would think we would want legal counsel about the overlay district. To help draft the text for that.
I mean, we can help, I mean, we could work on the district itself and get the map kind of somewhat drafted. I mean, that's kind of.
Is there a better location in the township too? Maybe we should look for a better location in the township. Yeah, who's to say that's the best location? Right.
And I think that they were consumers owns a piece.
Yeah.
I think that's a big deal. I would think.
But also I think if you're gonna do an overlay, and then try to put in the total megawatts to.
Correct, so, yeah.
To, to meet the need, so you don't have to have more land, then we, we need to know where these numbers come from.
That's the language that I don't know how to draft.
Right.
Cause that would.
Okay.
You know, here's our overlay, but we can't have more than fifty megawatts total. Whatever, I think that's.
Right, you have, we need to know where the numbers come from. And I think maybe the lawyers can help with that, yes. But there's a projection, I, yeah, of in twenty forty or something, seven megawatts for twenty forty, so.
Under fifty megawatts, if there's, uh.
It's not a large.
If it comes, or if one comes to the township and it's under fifty, then we have the jurisdiction. To approve, you know, we still have the authority to approve it.
Because it's not considered a large.
So we still have to have an ordinance.
But Dixie, let me ask you, you were at the meeting, if this is your interpretation of that whole number calculation?
Eleven, I, yes, a thousand lots in Columbia Township, and I said, you know, some are big, so, um, four times eleven is forty-four thousand. And so, and then I, I ran the numbers by Catherine after everyone broke up. I said, did I interpret this correctly? She said, yes. She said, though, after November twenty ninth, the minimum allowed based on the state is fifty. So even though Columbia Township only needs like, let's say twenty, we still have to make it fifty in order to meet the state minimum requirement.
Right, but what I was going to, to ask is, is it you, also your interpretation that. The reason for bringing all of that up is that we would try to limit the amount of megawatts coming into our. Township to fifty. Fifty would be the cap.
Vesper's already.
I know, that's what I'm saying. That's another reason, in my opinion, where. I don't know if it's clear what our legal grounds to do that are.
The minimum amount is fifty, and Michael was saying that the township only has to have. Energy for the amount of energy used by its residents.
I, I know, I know what Michael's saying. Let me, let me, let me, let me say this a different way. Currently, the way the legislation was written is that anything above fifty, the state can come in and just say, you're doing it. Right? It can be fifty, two hundred, a thousand, two thousand, anything above fifty. But what, but what this is suggesting is that we write an ordinance or consider an alternative. Where we say in Columbia Township, anything above fifty is not permitted, because we don't need it. And that's where I'm saying, I feel like that's in territory that I don't know. How we would write that language, and actually if that language is. Legal yet.
Right, because that, I think that hinges on the, uh, somewhere with the lawsuit.
If we don't have local control, we cannot do that, this.
Yeah, if, if, if the local control is taken away, yeah.
That's the whole idea of the, of this.
But with local control being taken away, if we met the state minimum requirement.
Yeah, no.
My understanding, my understa- yeah, my understanding is we could try to say we have demonstrated need, so we don't need any more than that. We have demonstrated that we have a facility that meets the need of the thing, but. We're not necessarily getting the power anyway, and the state law says if it's over fifty, the state regulates it. So, we're trying to demonstrate need, but that might be a moot point, because they might not have to go by that.
I presume if, if someone comes in and they really want more than fifty, and our regulation says fifty. Then they would have to go to with the Public Service Commission, they would have filed an application, then they might be in a lawsuit. Which I'm sure that there are other communities within the seventy-nine that would probably have a very similar. Um, situation to what we do, and then I presume it probably just works its way up through the board system.
Well.
Yeah, I don't.
Right now, we can't, we can't limit it to fifty.
Yeah, you can't. Because the, the law says.
Oh, we don't have local control. We do not have local.
Yeah, we don't have anything.
With P A two thirty-three.
Yeah.
So if you have a facility over fifty megawatts, and you, they don't wanna come to the township, they go to the state.
Right.
Yes.
But, but if your township says that it's fifty, it doesn't.
It doesn't matter.
Although, otherwise, Dixie, otherwise all we would have had to do to get Vesper out of here is to quick write an ordinance that say.
Can't have anything more.
Can't have anything more than fifty megawatts, and theirs being a two hundred megawatt facility, they wouldn't have qualified, they'd have to leave.
It's, it, it doesn't, it won't happen, because the state wrote a law.
Yes.
Right.
Yes.
And this, and it would take them a year, but they're still gonna get there.
Yep, and they're gonna make.
And they're gonna put it wherever they want.
Yep.
Again, uh, um, whatever rules they want.
Yeah.
So the law is, the law essentially, when that law was written, it said, oh, I'm sorry, Columbia Township, you don't get to decide. We cannot prevent them, and this is what I don't feel like anybody's getting when, when we talk to people, we cannot prevent. Them from coming.
No matter what our ordinance is.
No matter what, we cannot prevent it. We can put it off for a year if they go through the state, but that's it. That's it.
What Michael was saying is whatever the use is in your community should be the limit to the law, no.
No, he was saying that, he was saying that you could say that as a demonstrated need, but that if they could say. We're not, that's only if that commission, the M T S C or whatever.
I think that's why Michael, Sherman, Catherine's for disagree on that, because my, I think Michael thinks that is a fight that could be. Had and potentially won, but it hasn't been won yet, and Catherine's saying. It's, that's not law yet. You can't just say, we're, our township's capping it at ten, our township's capping it at five, our township's capping it. There's, I think especially in the way that the P A two thirty-three is written, and that's why Foster Swift is going after that.
And that's how Catherine said that after November twenty ninth, the minimum is fifty, which therefore you need the state requirement.
I think you're misinterpreting, the fifty is.
Whether it's.
Under, yeah, we can regulate them.
Right.
Over fifty, the state has the control.
Right.
It, it isn't a cap, it's then they go, they can go, the state regulates the facilities over fifty megawatts.
Yeah, anything under fifty is considered small scale, and we still have the right to regulate that. Anything over fifty, it, the state has regulated that. We don't get to say whether it's over or whether. Or not an over fifty can come in. We don't get a say in that, cause the state, the state is doing that.
They took away the control.
They took away the control, so, yeah, we could cap it, we could say fifty and they'll just be like, alright, we'll put in a hundred.
Except like Michael saying, based on the demonstrated need.
Well, that's a, that's a hypothesis. That's kind of a, that's kind of a, you can try that, that. That isn't anywhere written in the law. That's not anywhere in, in any of that.
Cause we're gonna create this overlay with six parcels in it, and somebody's gonna, Vesper's gonna want it, and they're not in the district. They're gonna go to the state. So our, the state trumps our ordinance, whatever it says.
No matter what we do.
I, I.
Unless Vesper decides to work with us.
Correct. Nothing trumps, well, that's what I'm getting at. Do we think that? I don't know, that's what I'm.
That's a state thing.
Right, so does federal government override any state decision?
Location, there's that money that they put in, and then the township can. Put in their con, you know, the seventy-five thousand that they gotta pay, and then the township can voice their comments or whatever. So I guess maybe at that time, the township would demonstrate the need, maybe at that point, I'm not really sure.
Because, and here's the other thing about the demonstrated need, that's, that's cool, we don't need that. But that energy that they're taking for the grid is not for Columbia Township.
Right.
And so why should, why should us as residents in a residential area have to have an industrial facility in our neighborhood?
Talk to, talk to the senate and the house and the governor.
The state of Michigan.
We all agree with you Dixie, that, we a hundred percent agree with you. But the reality is the state usurped that authority from our township.
All township.
They stole.
As of November twenty nine.
Yes.
Yeah, uh, we, everybody here one hundred percent says we don't want it at all, ever. So, I mean, and, and they, Vesper's even said they take the, they take the energy and then they sell it. It's gonna, it, it can go anywhere. That energy that they take can go anywhere.
Maybe I should contact Michael and have him clarify this whole demonstrated need thing, because I do believe it is a hypothesis. It is a potential argument that townships could make. But I believe he also said like, we don't really know if that's gonna be viable or not, because you could say. Columbia Township only needs seven megawatts. And so we're gonna allow a fifty megawatt facility, but then the state, because they already took control over where it goes and, and eliminated that from our power, they could also say. Great, you need seven, it doesn't matter, because this is for the whole state. We're sharing all of our elect, our, our power.
Yeah.
So it doesn't matter what your demonstrated need in Columbia Township, because it's not just for you. I believe that's what the state would say.
It doesn't, the state have issues right now, and the reason why the lawsuit was filed is because. The regulations have been put out to the Public Service Commission, do not, um, convey what was written in the law. So I mean, they have, they have issues.
Right, that, I, I believe that.
That's the point of the lawsuit, and I think the main issues are based on. Location zoning.
And then on top of that, depending on whatever your. And then on top of that, depending on whatever your interpretation is of the law, basically, the court system makes the determination, if I change it, it's not a court.
Right.
We I don't know that we can go to court against the M P S C.
The the lawsuit is, is to, well.
Administrative rules that they created, if they don't follow.
Follow the the legislation.
They added stuff that's not in the law, and that's what the law.
That's what the lawsuit's for, yeah.
That they follow the incorrect steps.
But outside of that, if you're saying, like, well, if we don't like what the state does, we can just sue them, we are, we can't sue the state, I mean, we could try, we don't have the money to sue the state, we don't have the money to sue the M P S C, we don't have the money to sue Vesper, we don't have the money to sue anybody. I mean.
How much is the Vesper facility, a hundred and fifty million?
I think so.
Good luck trying to sue them. It's a bad, I mean, it's a, it's bad legislation.
Let me, I I'm gonna ask you this, Dixie, since you're here as our only resident. As a resident, what what would you want us to do? You've heard a lot of information. What would you want us to do at this point?
Me personally, I, as you know, I do not want it in my neighborhood, and and what I understood is, like you said, that you can do a demonstrated need, and by putting it on two fifteen, it's not gonna be governing our local roads, it is in um public use. Okay, and it's right off on two fifteen, right next to the color line, so if we have to have it, that's a fine place for it.
Yeah, but if you can't get the owners to sell the property.
Um, I understand that, um, like, for example, didn't Tom Ikey come here when it was, um, when they were talking about doing marijuana, and they were talking about doing all of that, he was here, they are business people.
Well, yeah, and but selling doesn't matter, I think, here, here's what we don't know, if we go out and create an overlay district, I think what they're, what Foster Swift is banking on is they're saying, if a township creates an overlay district that allows for these renewable energy facilities, generally speaking, they've done their duty. Now, it would be up to the property owners in that overlay district to decide if they wanna sell it to Vesper or consumers or whoever. So that's not, that's not our concern, our concern is just saying, if if you wanna come in here, you can come in right here. But we don't know where that's gonna land, because currently, the state's saying, we can put it wherever we want, and we're trying to say, nope, we want you to only put it right here, and so I think the concept of an overlay district is contingent upon the lawsuit.
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
That's because that's what the law.
That's what the law says right now.
You can't.
We cannot control where that goes.
The law says you can only have a Creo, the workable ordinance is actually something that's not really in there, that's something that.
That Vesper can choose to do with us.
The Creo is basically your ordinance is what the state says.
So so wouldn't they run up against um Minnesota mayhem?
Dixie, Dixie, you, okay, you should go, have you read, have you read two thirty-three and two thirty-four? Okay.
Yeah.
Because that's.
They want to go next to you, they can, if that person.
This is what started the whole thing, is because the state passed a law a year ago that said, the M P S C, in the interest of making sure our energy grid is all up to sn- we can do renewable energy projects wherever we want in your township, and you can't, you can't say no.
Percent.
So if you had a person that lived right next door to you that had a hundred acres, and Vesper went to them, now, I don't know how close you lived to the power lines, but if Vesper went to them and said, hey, we'd love to build a battery storage plant here, and they said, sure, here's our property for sale, they could do it, and you have no choice in the matter, we have no choice in the matter, because the state now says they can go anywhere.
And they can be, and the state.
Am I wrong on that, guys? I mean, I'm not just saying.
No, you're correct, the, and the state says they can be fifty feet from the, from, I think their setbacks are like nothing, they could be three hundred feet from a dwelling.
If they're the, yeah, and then I, I think I read that they're only viable off to the surface of brown, is that in there?
What is that, what do you mean by that?
I mean, that if they have an accident, you know, down into a water table.
Oh, yeah, no. Right.
Yeah, there's probably.
We don't want them to go to the state, that's why we want.
That's why we get it worked, yeah.
And we have this thirteen-page ordinance, so we can control those things.
So the state gave it one year when they passed the law last November, to November twenty-nine, that's where the date comes from, is they basically said, this thing will go into effect, November twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-four, so when we heard all this, we started saying, you could go the route of trying to create an ordinance before November twenty-ninth, to at least give some additional parameters above what the state has, more restrictions, which is what we tried to do.
If.
If.
They choose to work with.
And it's called a workable ordinance, because if Vesper decides to work with us, and says, yeah, we can, we can get down with your ordinance, says, we'll do that, um, instead of going through the state, that's the direction we were heading. When we actually drafted the ordinance, sent it to the county, the county confer- concurred with it, it came back to the board, then the board said, we don't know if we wanna go the route of the workable ordinance, and then the lawsuit came up, which kinda changed direction and everything too, so now we're like, a little bit in a conundrum, because the law's still on the books, it is now
passed.
Enforcable, and now Homier's saying, if we, if we win this lawsuit, maybe you can go with a Creo instead of a workable ordinance, that might be better. Um, so that's why it just seems like there's a lot of moving parts to this, and we're still fighting the state of Michigan, we're not fighting ourselves or the board or whatever, it's, it's, we're fighting the state, and so that's why I think I'm certainly happy to take this back to the board and say, hey, the language in this is confusing, we're not sure exactly what you guys want us to do, it seems like you want us to do some things, I can do that as well, but I also think Dixie is right, that matters like this are initiated by the planning commission.
Doesn't mean that all this text will stay as a specialty, yeah, it's.
I'm not sure, we do need additional direction, but I also think that, because this is such a high stakes game, we need legal help too, I just don't think.
I I, I mean, I just don't think that any of us are are gonna be able to write.
Whether it's, we get board approval to have Michael come to a couple of these meetings and walk us through, like, here's what we've got so far, here's where we're trying to go, we wanna do an overlay district, help us make sure this thing is right and airtight.
Then next, we need the other, we don't have solar farm, and we don't have wind, so we need those ordinances too.
Maybe we can do all of them at the same time.
Well, if the overlay says that all of them.
All of them.
Overlay, then yes, it would be beneficial to have all of the ordinances.
That's only if we win the lawsuit.
But, yeah, the overlay should apply to all renewables.
Yeah, that's the big phrase, isn't it?
That is that overlay, that's little area, that's where they would call them.
Now, just from a Z A standpoint, where you're reading this, if we create an overlay district, could it encompass all the renewables in one swoop, or do we have to have separate ordinance texts for solar, separate for wind, separate for batteries, separate for.
You have to have separate.
Because they're different technologies.
Land use provisions would, will be different.
Okay.
Cause solar is different than battery storage, and wind is different. Solar, you have the glare, the light.
Wind step back, you gotta be as tall as.
The people, the people getting impaled with the blades when they fall off.
So the special wa- yeah, the special land use, we'll call it the ordinance, all three of them would be separate.
Yeah.
But within the overlay district, they would all be listed, and then we would go to the special land use section for the provision.
Yeah.
Or we can have a law in the same, it could all be in the same chapter. I guess, in the overlay, you could have the provisions in that same article, I guess.
Under renewables or something, and have like subsections of renewables, or, yeah.
See, because it also includes what's put on your site plan. Special land use and site plan, it actually says in the ordinance what needs to be on the plan, so all of the renewables could have the same kind of format, with the specifics that apply to that use.
Okay. Well, uh, I'm not voting or making motions tonight, but I think that this needs a motion.
I am gonna make.
Specific motion.
Yes, it does, I will make a motion that we send this back to the board and request um, the clarifications noted um, to our board representative, and also request that we can have an attorney present um, or attorney um, to help a a draft any ordinances. Or any, any further text, right, what?
I said, you got that, Tasha?
She was writing fast, and I was trying to talk a little slower. So that's my motion.
Could you read it back? If you guys, if you guys know the motion, I'll second it.
All in favor?
Just trust me.
Alright.
Hi.
Uh, abstain.
It would be easier if they told us just what they wanted us to do, and then we could do that.
But that's really not how it should work, though, well, in a way, right?
The actual text that we came up with.
Right.
Needs to be amended.
Right.
Cause the overlay just says, yeah, do we use the same text? Yeah, so it's.
The, the board can, I believe, give direction to the planning commission, like, if there was a specific thing that they wanted us to do, which is probably candidly why we got into this whole nightmare.
Right.
Before somebody on the board said, rewrite these ordinances, or whatever happened, I don't know, because they thought it was a board directed.
Me, I think it was me, it started with me to help redo the ordinance, cause they're so bad.
Yeah.
So, I had kinda started.
Thanks, Tasha.
Yeah.
I mean, the board shouldn't micromanage and control. Hey, this is a big issue for our township, we need help from the planning commission, here's some things that we think are important to consider.
Right.
Go to work.
She was on the board, so the board knew what the planning commission was doing with the ordinance. So it wasn't like a secret, and the board didn't know.
Yeah.
Yeah, she was the one that reported to the board.
Yeah. Well, no, uh, Bev was.
Beverly was.
But was Christie on the board, on the P C before Beverly was?
Yes. Yes.
And then she's the, yeah.
Wait, no, so she was on the planning commission, and then she became the clerk, and then Bev came on, and then Leslie.
So, no, Leslie left, oh, okay, right, yeah.
Christie wasn't on the P C when she was also on the board, she was on the board separately from being, or P C separately from being on the board, okay.
Yeah, she became the clerk, and then Leslie came on.
Yeah, I referenced last thing.
Bev was always the liaison from the board.
Okay.
Yes. And then, yeah, Christie was the chairperson, then Leslie, and then Christie became the clerk, and then Leslie.
Moved.
And then Leslie moved.
Okay.
So, alright, um, old business, we've already talked about the ordinances that we're going to wait and try to figure out what the heck's going on. And possibly restart.
Is there a specific action item on that? Tasha, I know you were gonna.
Hi, I think the action item was that you were going to go back through your notes to find.
Timeline.
I'm gonna, yeah, work on the timeline, yes.
Timeline, and I'm gonna, I guess, give the board an update on what we think happened up to this point.
Yeah.
Yes.
More power to you, brother.
But as for the old business, since, you know, we're not gonna
Do that.
Kinda go back to that, we would just say, we decided not to continue discussion or something.
Right. Excuse me. I didn't get up that early, I think. Does it feel like it's about midnight? Kinda.
Reports?
Yeah, zoning administrator. Yes, I did. So was that a another barn dominium? I wonder if it was related to the same person. I mean, maybe not. One of them was a realtor.
Uh, no, that was a realtor, that's somehow.
Yeah, so we've had a couple inquiries about them, so it's not something that's going away. Cause it's like a viable building option. Um, and um then, uh, Z B A, she's not present?
Um, the Z B A did not have a meeting.
Okay. And then township board member, do you have one?
Um, no. I feel like with the, we already kinda covered the status of the text amendments. Um, Tasha, I didn't look closely at that, did you split those into three separates?
Two. I did two.
It was the.
You put the primer foundation and the minimum square footage together?
Yeah, because they're the same section, yeah. But I separated the accessory building, not vacant lot, into one, and then the other, the minimum dwelling size in one, because they're in the same section.
Yeah. Um, I guess I would say, uh, one thing, one thing I can say is, as a report is, um, I did have a meeting with Ken on Monday, and specifically asked him what he thought the top three priorities for the planning commission were. And he said, number one, sorting out the renewable energy situation, number two, establishing some clearer policies and procedures of how we um, go about our work, so he's submitted some possible documents from like M S U Extension, and some different like recommended ways that a P C can go about having a checklist for certain things, so I think, um, I forwarded those to Catherine, who's our P C attorney, and I think I'm not sure about this, but ultimately, if the board says, hey, for the P C to do X, they need to follow X checklist, that would have to be something that the board voted on, right, Tasha?
Saying that would need to be a resolution, yes.
Like, we can't just come up with our own, like, hey, here's how we wanna do things, like, if the board wants a specific, cause there's been some, there's been some discussion at some of our board meetings, that when we send something to the board for recommendation, recommended approval, different people want different information.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and so I think Ken thinks that the second priority is to figure out a standardized operating procedure of how we handle things like that, so I think we're trying to work through that, maybe at the board level, but at some point, that might come back to the P C, I don't know.
Would be, yeah, what the board would like.
Yeah.
To see, cause that, and that would be a, a board policy.
Yeah, and then number three was, um, he was very interested to see what was going on with this. So.
Now you got them.
Well, I, I'll say this, I'm clearer now than I ever have been. But I don't know if you wanna compare that to how it was before, not really sure what the standard was. No, I, I think, I think with Tasha's timeline, I just wonder if maybe we, we uh, didn't ask the right questions at the right time, in terms of what we were doing here, but we'll figure it out.
And I think that's kind of what I was trying to throw when I started, the supervisor, it was brought up to me to continue with the show, cause I was surprised that it wasn't adopted.
Sure.
Right.
That's, that's kinda how it started, was, you know, I need a copy of the ordinance, oh.
It's kinda been a perfect storm, which copy are you talking about?
Correct, so it took, yeah, about three months to get the draft that we have right now.
Yeah.
And, yeah.
What a crazy ride, so anyways, that's, that would be my report, so, planning commission moving forward, whoever's on it, um, that's the three charges, number one priority, renewable energy, uh, protocols and procedures, and wrapping up whatever we're doing with the ordinances, so we can feel confident that what is on the website and out in the public is what we want it to be.
And available for the, easy for the public to interpret and. interpret and, so.
The end of my report.
Okay, well, it's been fun. I wish I were coming back, but. I can what? I can. Yep. And laugh at you all.
Yeah, I just don't understand how that's a done deal. I mean, I don't know.
Yep. So.
I mean, it may not be.
I hate to leave in the middle of, I think, I don't agree with it because I have been part of the, of the Vesper thing and I think it's an unwise decision.
I agree.
To, you know, I think it's unwise to upset, put new people on it when they don't have all that information because you're gonna spend a few months catching somebody up. But, you know what? Got my decision. Well, good luck.
Well, because, because I've been going over this stuff with Catherine just from a legal standpoint because there's a lot of things that are said that aren't always correct. The P C is required to have five, seven or nine numbers. Um, the P C is required to have an ex officio member, which is somebody from the board. And if it doesn't have five members or seven or nine, which ours is five, or it doesn't have an ex officio member from the board, it's improperly constituted.
And you can't do anything.
Well, it just, it just means it's not legally following what it's supposed to be. And Catherine said if you have an improperly constituted board, it opens yourself up to legal jeopardy because if you do anything as a board, you pass an ordinance, you do this, you do that, you deny a special land use or whatever, somebody can come back and say that board wasn't properly constituted. There were only four people on it or there was no ex officio member or it was not properly seated. And so she just cautioned that we need to make sure that our P C is properly constituted. So is there gonna be somebody in your seat at the next meeting?
Oh, I, yeah, I would like to say you're still a five-member person, but if one seat isn't filled, you still have a five member. But then now you have, you have to have, you know, you have to have still bodies here to make a form.
Right.
Cause there are commissions that are supposed to have five and they only have four because they can't rent another person to fill the seat, so that does happen.
And Anita's done too? I mean, she won't be.
No, she's, she's just not here tonight.
Okay. Okay.
All right, oh, motion to adjourn. What, what else do we have to do?
I just thought, I was thinking.
Okay, go ahead.
To planning commission, I was thinking the planning commission, that the Z B A was thinking the whole.
What's happening with the guy that go, go, hold on too close to the wake?
I don't know.
You don't know?
It's still. Yeah.
Why is it still on navigation?
The balloon, the balloon wanted.
Yeah.
It's, it's appeals and stuff. It just takes order.
Yeah, I'm sure they're not gonna wanna jerk it down.
Well, yeah, that would suck. What was in agreement?
One more time?
Remember how, um, he sat back there and he was in agreement about denying that to.
Oh, it, yeah, I didn't know who he was. I only learned that that's who he was after.
He was the guy, the, the?
Yeah, the, yeah. Oh, well, you weren't at the donor of the fields meeting.
What happened?
When, um, Andy Potts, the one who built the house without a permit, they requested ovarian and the boons were at his zoning board of appeals. And he was against.
Giving them ovarian.
Granting them ovarian.
Oh, because he didn't get one, right? That's pretty funny.
Did he make public comment to that effect?
Yes.
Oh, my goodness.
Did he say, I didn't get one, so he doesn't get one? Wow.
For his, the whole different. He did have a building permit.
Right. Right, anything else, anybody?
Did we get any work done?
Yeah, we got it. Yeah, we did. All right, I'm gonna move that we adjourn the meeting at eight forty P M. Do I have a second? Grab a second that, and everybody in favor? Uh, I think it's usually about sixty-eight, maybe?
So with your letter to Ken, you've gotten in no response then from?
Um, I did not get a response, but I did email him today and asked him if he could give me a response and he gave. Because Jason and I are married. And that we would, um, we would, um, talk about it, talk about things and then, and then, um.
How is that any different from me going over to Dave's house? You see what I'm getting at?
It's not any different than you going to Dave's house. Yeah, and saying, yeah, I agree with you. Yeah, that's a good point. Yeah, that's, yeah, we'll talk about that. It's, it's, so.
Well, you have to distance yourself?